Hey, wives. What is going on? So, as I'm sure you can guess by the title, we are getting ready to talk about cannabis, marijuana, weed, Mary Jane. Whatever you want to call it, that is what we're getting ready to talk about. That and the social equity programs. And what's kind of going on with recreational weed in the city of Detroit? I am super duper excited to be having this conversation with Councilman James Tate. I am geeked. So we'll give everybody a second to tap in, join in. Of course, um, the question feature is available. If you have questions in particular, um, do not forget to use those. Shout out to Ayesha Mitchell for getting this all set up for us. I am super, super duper excited. Um, I hope that you are too. We got plenty of things to talk about. So we're gonna let everybody join on in. Um, if you have any questions again, please feel free to use the question and answer feature. Um, or just send me a DM. If you got my number, shoot me a text or leave it in the comments. All quote, we're gonna try to get to as many questions as we possibly can within our limited timeframe. This is so exciting. I don't know where I went there. I'm excited. Um, because it's been such a taboo subject for such a long time. And to finally see, gee, thanks so much, to finally see, um, all of these changes happening, especially right here in the city. I am geeked. You hear me? Excited. Because I think there's so many opportunities here. And, uh, the push for Detroiters to get heavily involved, top tier. So, we gonna come on in, come on in, come on in. Hey, friends, hi, how you doing guys, honey? For the sword bars. You know, some light, some slight. I'm super duper excited though. Y'all excited? Say yes. Just say yes, even if you're not excited, even if you are upset. I think that there is so much information here for everybody, for people who are concerned, for people who are just curious. Information for everybody, we're gonna try to get to all of it today. And if we don't get to all of it today, of course, I'll be providing you with links to resources and everything else so that, um, you can get as many of your questions answered as possible. So I'm trying to get the live geeked up. Get more people in here, share, 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 share. Tell your friends, go ahead and send, um, send this live to whoever your homeboy got a marijuana conviction, but he's interested in getting into the legal cannabis business. Send this live to them. If your auntie is concerned about the fact that they trying to open a dispensary in her neighborhood, send this live to her. If you and your two cousins were talking about perhaps starting a cannabis business, send this live to them. You want to get as many people in here as possible because we want to share as much information as possible with as many people as possible as quickly as possible. You feel me? Okay. So, uh, in just a second here, I'm gonna tap in with the councilman. I'm so excited to talk to him, especially, um, considering how long he's been championing this issue. So there are lots of things to be said. I am excited. And of course, after we are done with the live, um, I'm gonna post this to my page. Definitely gonna post it on YouTube. So the information will continue to be available. It's not a one-time thing. You can still get your questions answered and you can still get involved. So, uh, let's see. It looks like he is in the room. So let's go ahead. Live. Hey.
Hello there. Let me move this camera just a, there we go. That's a little better. How are you this evening?
I am doing well, doing swell. How are you?
Doing well. I'm thankful, you know, I'm honored to be here. I appreciate you for allowing me to come and just spread some good news. Because that's what we got to spread today, just nothing but good news.
I love it. So for anyone, first of all, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be part of your information spread. Um, I know there's a lot of options. I appreciate y'all choosing me. Um, for people who have heard your name before, but aren't as well-versed in Detroit politics, Detroit legislation, can you briefly just, um, share a bit about who you are, what you do, and, um, how we got here?
Yep, so, uh, thank you again, T, two times. I appreciate you for, again, allowing me a chance to come here and spread some good news. I am James Tate, the councilman representing District One. We are the furthest northwest, uh, district in the city of Detroit. Uh, our northern border is Southfield. Our western border is Redford Township. Uh, been on the Detroit City Council, was first elected in 2009. And, uh, at that time, we were all at large, so I represented the entire city. And then 2013, uh, we went to districts and I became the first ever District One Council Representative. Um, and I've sat in that seat since then. And I've been blessed to be able to do so and honored, uh, to have the, the opportunity to work on this very, and you were mentioning earlier, it was a very taboo issue. It's controversial issue, it's an issue that's fraught with litigation. Um, you name it, there's a whole bunch of different ways to describe it. But it's also one, uh, a, a subject that for too long, um, the benefits of it has been hidden. And the benefits of the cannabis industry has actually been hoarded by those who are, uh, not Detroiters. Uh, it's to the point where the state law was such that if you were not a medical marijuana, uh, holder of a license, you would not be allowed to get a recreational license for at least two years, which was just ridiculous. And so there were a lot of folks, I'm gonna say, and, and this is almost like my victory lap, because we go live today. We're not just live, uh, T, two times. Our website and our ordinance is actually live today. Um, website just went live just a few minutes ago. So this is like breaking news, so to speak. But, uh, we have folks who were saying, oh, you a hater, Tate? You just against black folks? You against Detroit? You against cannabis? All this stuff? No, but this is, this is a calculated move. And so when the state says that Detroiters, essentially, and not Detroiters, but anyone who did not have a medical marijuana license, uh, would not be able to participate till 2022. That's when the law would allow Detroiters to participate if you didn't have a license. Well, we gotta get our ordinance together, but then we gotta start advocating to the state and get them to change that deadline, move that goalpost a little closer and make it more attainable. And so, uh, in the process, these two years, uh, since the, uh, law was passed in the state of Michigan, you had other municipalities, you had Ferndale, uh, some other places, they allow recreational marijuana, but they weren't considering equity. That wasn't a concern of these. For city of Detroit, for us to have a population of, uh, and, you know, we haven't had the census numbers come out yet, but at least 80%, right? I think that's still being a little bit liberal, but at least 80% are conservative. 80% African-American, for there to be, when we looked at how many medical marijuana facilities that are located in the city of Detroit, had about 45. Some days you have more because they close and open like that. But you got 45 of them and only four are owned by black folks. That to me is just, don't end the city of Detroit, doesn't make sense. So there's no way that we were going to sign off on a, on a ordinance, get it going and provide that competitive advantage to those, uh, medical marijuana facilities without giving a same opportunity for those in the city of Detroit who lived and toiled through all the mess and madness that we've gone through all these years. I mean, we got brothers and sisters, mothers, fathers, cousins who gone to jail, spent many years behind bars for dime bags of weed. But we got people who are right now making a whole lot of money, a real comfortable life, doing it legally. And that's got, I'm, I'm not trying to take it a, a opportunity from anybody who wants to participate, whether you live in the city of Detroit, if you want to participate in this, in, in the cannabis industry in the city of Detroit, we, we welcome you. If you are someone who lives outside of the state of Michigan, we welcome you too. But first priority, at least mine, is to make sure that Detroiters have a true opportunity, not just to peek in the door, but actually be a full-fledged, a long-term cannabis entrepreneur that potentially will have a generational effect on their families in a positive way, whether it's generational wealth, but also to transfer business knowledge and understanding of this industry. So, uh, this is, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm terribly excited about it because, you know, again, two years of having to, to, you know, uh, just kind of swim through the mess, um, it's been challenging. But we're here today and I want to thank the work group that worked with me and my team. It started out with about 40 members and whittled it down to like seven people on the leadership who got, I mean, they, day, night, weekends, we were working together. And in the pandemic, so we were doing it Zoom, um, but we all got this together. And what you see today with the, uh, with the recreational adult use, uh, ordinance is a result of all their hard work and, and research.
Okay, so can you explain that to us? What is the adult use ordinance and what does that mean for the adults of Detroit?
Yeah, so adult use, um, uh, adult use orders simply is recreational marijuana. Right now, currently, we have medical marijuana ordinance, which means that you have to have a card. And we all are, most of us are pretty familiar with that. If we haven't used it ourselves, we are at least familiar with the concept. You have to have a certain illness and be approved by some medical professional to receive a card. At that point, you can go into a provisioning center, that's what they call it when it's a, a medical location. You go into a provisional center, you, uh, purchase your, your cannabis and you're on your way. Well, what adult use, uh, marijuana ordinance, what it does is takes away the need to actually have a card. And it's just for recreational, so it's not this whole, you know, we know that people are, are able to find medical benefits, psychological benefit from, from cannabis. Well, sometimes you just want to chill out and relax and be recreational, period. And so, uh, we don't want you to have to, you know, go into the shadows and, and get your weed that way, your cannabis that way. We want you to be able to walk confidently in the city of Detroit and hopefully do so with a Detroiter behind the, the, uh, the, the shelf providing you with your, your product. So that's essentially what the, uh, the difference between medical marijuana licensing and adult use licensing is. And so I'll peel back a few more layers. What the licensing does, what we did was we allowed for all of the licenses that the state of Michigan provides. So whether that's adult retail, and that's what typically is called a dispensary, or, uh, the three classifications of grow, uh, facilities, micro business, secure transport, a safety facility, all ten, even designated consumption lounge. So we allow those within our licensing. And for individuals who are certified as a legacy Detroiter, there's benefit to do, to, to being a certificate, certified.
Okay.
Yep, so, so being certified, go ahead, ask your question, I'm just talking.
I was just, I love it, I love it. I, I love a good conversationalist. So what are, what is the, the Legacy Detroit program? What is that, what is that program?
Yep, so Legacy Detroit, uh, program is part of the overall ordinance. So it's not a separate license, so I just want to make sure that everyone knows that, uh, getting, uh, being certified as a Legacy Detroiter, it gives you actual, it gives you additional benefits, but it's not a separate license, right? So the legacy certification, uh, the benefits are, it provides you a chance to, uh, purchase city-owned property at 75% off of the market rate, right? So it's not all properties, but these are properties that have been zoned and, uh, or are located in, uh, green zone areas, areas that are zoned for cannabis use. And what we're doing is we're working to make sure that you don't have to go through all the process to, to get it zoned. We're gonna do all of that for that particular individual. Now, I'm not gonna say it's a whole, you know, gang of, of, of properties. It is a small amount, right? But what it does is, we, what we found is that providing city-owned property alleviates the, uh, challenge that many of our entrepreneurs that we've seen around the country face when you go and you knock on the door of a landowner who owns property within a, a area that's zoned for cannabis and they jack up that price five, six, maybe even higher, uh, times the actual market rate. So we're gonna try to, we, we're doing our best to address that particular situation. So that's one benefit.
Okay, um, so where are the zones?
So zoning is really, ugh, zoning is like all across the city. So, yeah, when you look at a zoning map, it, it looks kind of intimidating, but when you actually come down to, 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 to ground level, you'll see that, um, there are more places that are available than you think. And if you just look at the map, for instance, uh, our zoning, uh, legislation says that you have to be a thousand feet away from a school. If your, uh, your, your establishment has to be a thousand feet away from a school, thousand feet away from a park, thousand feet away from a church, thousand feet away from another, uh, marijuana facility. Now again, when you start talking about the city of Detroit, people go, oh my goodness, we got all these churches, how are we gonna get anything in here? Well, what we did was, and we understood that that was a challenge. And we told, you know, all we did was enforce what's already on the books. We, we, we mentioned, and this was all the way back when we were working on, I was the sponsor of it as well, the medical marijuana ordinance back in 2015. We told the churches, look, and we sent out letters, you gotta get, you gotta make sure that you have your tax exempt status, um, uh, current and up to date. So fast forward, um, to, uh, I want to say last year, early last year. We had about 9,000 plus churches that were on the books. So now that's 9,000 spots that create a prohibition essentially for businesses doing the marijuana to be able to be located at location. So what we did was we cleaned up the records. We went and checked, how many of these establishments actually have tax exempt status? We looked and we found out that that number of, about 9,000 or so, got shrunk down to 1,000, maybe 700. So that's huge. So what that did was it freed up some space. So the other challenge that we found out from those who trying to get into the industry is that schools, some of these closed schools, you know, we have a number of schools that are closed in the city of Detroit that were formerly DPS, open schools. Some of us went to those schools. Well, those schools still, even though they were closed, they were determined to be, um, a, uh, restriction, if you will, in terms of zoning for those who are trying to locate, if it's within a thousand feet. We went back, cleaned the books and said, if that school is not open and operating, then we will not count that against your zoning, um, uh, verification. And then lastly, um, we also indicated when it comes down to, uh, we said churches, schools, oh, parks, parks. We know land is, is, is very, very valuable, but land is also potentially the, that, that, you know, uh, pocket park that's in a neighborhood that is really just land and it has no programming on it. The city's not doing anything. We don't have, and we don't even have, uh, uh, trash cans that is piece of land that we're potentially looking to do something with at some point, but not currently. It will not go towards the zoning restrictions either. So that's what we're doing to address those zoning issues right now as opposed to moving in of a thousand feet to 750, 500 feet. That's what a lot of people have been asking right now, but we, we want to be conservative because you kind of mentioned it, uh, when you talked, I think you said something like if you had a concern about, uh, a dispensary or something in your neighborhood. Well, that's, that's what we have to listen to as well. So I am big on making sure Detroiters have an opportunity to pursue their dreams, whatever it is. Whatever, legal, whatever it is. But we also have to make sure that we balance the, 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 the desires and the real concern that people within the community have as well. A lot of folks, I'm telling you, from 2015 to now, even those little gray hole here, hair old ladies, they're even thinking about things a little bit differently now. I remember having these conversations with them in the district, uh, in 2015. You know, they talked about how bad cannabis smell, how people act when people are on it. I mean, all, all these negative things were coming out. Fast forward now to 2020, when we were having conversations, some of those same people are, their, their thought processes have changed because they realized that a lot of propaganda has been put out there about cannabis. But then the other, uh, issue is they realize with the ordinance that we've put in place, Detroiters will actually have an opportunity to succeed in, in Tate Park. So it changed again.
For, for anyone who's listening now, who still may be concerned, um, can you highlight, aside from our economic benefit, but what else, what, what other community benefits there are to this ordinance and this, this social equity program?
So for those who are not looking to participate, um, I'm gonna speak to, 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 to all those folks. So the, we have some safeguards. So what we put in place was this thing called the Good Neighbor Plan. And it's a part of the ordinance as well. The Good Neighbor Plan essentially tells the businesses, look, we know that you're going to get some economic benefit out of this, uh, industry, period. We know that. What we don't know is how you're going to provide some type of support to the community surrounding you, which is just as important to us. And so this Good Neighbor Plan, every applicant who signs up, or every individual who applies for a license, they're going to have to provide us with what they are going to consider a Good Neighbor Plan. So what we did was, we gave folks a couple of different ideas, but it's not exclusive. So we say, okay, if you are an applicant and you're signing, uh, and, and you want to get a cannabis-related business in the city of Detroit and your, everything is, is perfect. And you can provide that particular neighborhood around your business 750 community hours. That's a, that's pretty significant. That's not bad. It's, it's more than some businesses are doing. So let, let's say another business comes in or another applicant comes in and say, okay, we can do 750, uh, uh, community hours, but we volunteer hours, but we also can guarantee that 50% of our employees are going to be returning citizens. Oh, well now you just provided us with something to think about. So now if I'm comparing those two applications, which one do you think I'm gonna go, which one we gonna go for? We're gonna go for the one that's gonna provide the most benefit for the community. So it's not always about dollars to the city. And that's why I want people to understand, it's not just about us making money. We'll make money as a city, as this, uh, uh, industry matures. We had a fiscal analysis report and within four years, we, we, we expect, we project, excuse me, the industry to hit at least $9 million annually in the city of Detroit. So we'll get our money, but we've got to be more concerned right now in making sure that Detroiters actually have a part of those, uh, opportunities that are providing the city of Detroit and others. So we do have safeguards and those are the things, so it's not, it's a competitive, these licenses are competitive. It's not first come, first served. So we're gonna come and get that license? No, 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 no. You need to tell us in your Good Neighbor Plan, what you talking about doing? How are you planning on helping the community? And that's not just for those who live outside of the city of Detroit, it's for the D.C. folks as well.
Okay. People want to know. Let's get to the details about the application. So we, you said it is, is live today, it just opened. What's the application window?
So what I want people to do is, uh, is the application window for Legacy Detroiters and those who actually have, uh, medical marijuana, uh, licenses. The application window is from April 1st until April 30th. April 1st until April 30th. So I want to make sure that people don't even have to try to remember all this stuff, right? So we put together a website and that just dropped today, that's live just a few minutes before we went on.
And I'll make sure I put this in the description for people who might have missed it. Um, detroitmeansbusiness.org/homegrown. Um, okay, so if the application window is April 1st through April 30th, what is it that, um, dropped today? What is it that people are, will be able to access today?
I'm glad you brought me back there. So what dropped today was the Legacy Detroit applications, the Legacy Detroit. That's to be certified, uh, to get those benefits that we talked about earlier, the reduction in cost for the, uh, I'm sorry, the, uh, reduction in, in cost for the properties that the city owns, that's 75% uh, reduction in market value. But also, this to me is, 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 is just as large, for the Legacy Detroiters, you will pay 1% of all fees associated with your licensing. So that's huge.
In case you're unaware, fees like $6,000, $1,000.
Yeah.
So we've taken a huge discount in that regard.
Yep, so I mean, here's the thing, some, some folks may not be able to do the math real quick, right? So I'm gonna do it for them. So today we dropped the, 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 uh, legacy certification and it's gonna be a hundred bucks, flat. And it's not refundable, so I'm just letting you know that right now. If you're not Detroit Lexi, don't go in thinking, well, maybe I can gain this system. You're gonna lose your $100. But it's $100, right? So now we just approved, city council just approved today in city council session, the fee scale. So fees are no higher than $5,000. We cannot go higher than $5,000. And you know, as a government, we gotta recoup our costs. So what did we do? We went to $5,000. But for a Legacy Detroiter, if we're talking about 1%, that's only 50 bucks. That's it. So 50 bucks, so to get your license, I'm talking just about strictly from the Detroit side of things, because there's a whole host of fees you still don't have to pay from the state. But for the city, to be, to get your license, we're talking about $100 to be certified and then 50 bucks for, uh, up to 50 bucks for your, um, your actual application fee. Yeah, that, that's, you won't find that anywhere around the country at all, at all.
Okay. All right, well, we appreciate that. Okay, so say, you, you, you mentioned earlier about having a plan and about the city, you know, the applications being super competitive. For those who are completely new to the industry, so we're talking about returning citizens, we're talking about, um, family members of returning citizens, talking about people who have had interest, but maybe not the business acumen. Would there be any resources for those brand-new business people? Because of course, while this program is amazing and it's offering so much access, we don't want to get the people there and they have them to fail.
Yeah, you're absolutely right and you own it. Because that is, that's something we also had to contemplate as well, looking around the country. We set up the, you have eight ordinances, but you don't have the support for those individuals who are trying to get into the industry. That's exactly what we're doing right now. We have, we put out an RFP. Um, basically, you know, we, we sent out, um, a request for those who want to help us with that technical assistance that will help entrepreneurs better understand the business, whether it's the, the business of cultivation, uh, of the actual plant itself and processing of the plant, but then also understanding the financial aspect of, uh, the, the, the actual business. Because this is a legitimate business that is highly regulated. And though your fees from the city side are, you know, rather reasonable, the ones from the state are a lot more challenging for some people to, uh, overcome. That's part of the reason as well that we wanted to make sure our fees from the city standpoint were as low as we possibly can get them. So, uh, make it that, uh, uh, we get the, 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 the technical assistance out there. We're this close to, uh, naming that individual because that, uh, request for proposals is what is called RFP. Uh, we did receive bids and we should be getting that group of individuals signed up within the next, uh, week or so. But again, I'm telling people to get your cert, go and get certified, but don't go crazy if you don't have all your documents today. There, you know, people like, like, gonna be running, 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 trying to get all these documents. Get them together. We got a window, remember, applications are not going to be received until April 1st. So take your time to get your information. That's why we wanted to, we didn't want to roll out January 1st. We literally just approved this ordinance at the end of November. So we want to give people a chance to get all the stuff that they need to get ready. So to be certified as a Legacy Detroiter, uh, and I can hear somebody calling through the phone right now asking, how do I get certified? I can hear it, right? So there's three ways, but each way, you have to have this. You have to be, you have to have lived in the city of Detroit for at least a year prior to your application. So for these three ways, that is, that's the one baseline. You have to have lived in the city of Detroit for at least a year prior to your application. So the way, the first way is legitimately be a Legacy, be a Detroiter, live in the city of Detroit for 15 out of the last 30 years. But again, you gotta remember, you still have to be a current Detroiter and be a Detroiter, uh, for a year prior to you applying, all right?
Okay.
So then you move to the second tier. Second tier is if you're low income. Uh, and I hate that phrase, but it's, it's, it's what it's called, is what it's classified as. And we wanted to make sure we had a threshold. If you're, if you're, if you make, uh, within the federal guidelines to be designated low income, and that is, uh, $24,716, I believe for a family of four. If that is your situation and you've lived in the city of Detroit for 13 out of the last 30 years, then you are to be designated as a Legacy Detroit. If you are, and this is our last one, and to me, I believe, the most important one, if you are an individual who's been previously incarcerated for a marijuana conviction, lived in the city of Detroit 10 out of the last 30 years. Because we know again, you may not have been able to live in the city of Detroit because you were locked in the bag. So that length of time is short. So let me say this as well. Honors is on the individual to prove these years that they actually lived in the city. So you can't just come in and say, look, I live in the city of Detroit. You gotta show and document, because again, this is, this is a pretty big deal to be able to be provided these benefits that we're offering. So we're gonna be accepting tax records, we're accepting, um, uh, W-2 forms, uh, we're accepting, uh, property tax and voter registration. But we're not limited to those items, but those are the items that for sure will provide you with an opportunity to, to, to clearly demonstrate that you've lived in the city of Detroit for either 15, 13, or 10 out of the last 30 years. And you'll find that information on that Detroit Means Business website.
Right, and it's pinned right now. I'm also gonna go ahead and make sure I put it in the description once I post the video now. Originally, we were supposed to stop at 6:30. But I got some questions and my audience got some questions. So if you don't mind. But I got some questions and my audience got some questions. So if you don't mind going a little bit longer with me, I just want people to get as much information as they can from this. Um, if that's cool with you.
I'm here. I've got a, a meeting at seven o'clock, a community meeting at seven. So I'm yours definitely until then.
Oh, great. We got time. So um one question that I saw came from Ms. Ebony Tenille. And she asked about the changes to the state's social equity program. And she wanted to know um if the city was working with the state for that, and if so, how would that affect the application process?
So, so I'm not sure in which uh social equity changes that she was referring to. Um, but again, we are doing, we are, we, we do work with the state, but we of course can't dictate what the state does. Uh that would have to come from state legislators and the governor who actually runs the MRA, the Marijuana Regulatory Agency. Uh they're the agency that oversees the cannabis uh in uh cannabis, all the cannabis laws within the state of Michigan. Uh but what I will say is again, there was extreme advocacy on my part, and, and I'll say along there's office in changing that two twenty-two to date um to now the date for Detroiters to be able to participate is in March of this year. Uh so we were able to move that needle um, you know, significantly a, a number of months. And our ordinance would not go into effect until we got that movement. And the licenses for uh Detroiters will not be issued until after that particular day in March. So uh we're, we're good on that front, but I, you know, if you have any questions that we don't get a chance to ask, add, answer here, by all means, you know, folks, give me a call on my, our, our, our line at the office, three one three two two four one zero two seven. And we're not in the office right now. Still going through this COVID thing, but we do, or you can email me and it's a long email. It's council, you ready? You ready T? I'm just gonna be
I got you. Yeah, council.
Councilmember Tate
Mm-hmm.
At Detroit M I dot gov. Councilmember Tate at Detroit M I dot gov. And we will, send us an email. We will answer your question. But first thing you want to do is go on that website, Detroit means business dot org backslash homegrown. A lot of folks put a lot of work into it. So you can also tell us what we need to change on that website. Like I said, it just rolled out today.
Awesome. So that rolled out today. Um I think people were saying that uh Michigan's racial, racial equity report came out today as well. So there's a abundance of new information for what's going on with um the, the adult use cannabis ordinance in the state and in the city, and a lot of it came out today. So you can expect to get more and more updates about that. If you're just joining us, welcome. And, and as you know, and I'm having a coun, a conversation with councilmember Tate about Detroit's uh recreational adult use marijuana ordinance and the Detroit Legacy Social Equity Program. So I just saw a really important question. Um I know that before there were some discrepancies between being able to have a medical marijuana and a CPL. So as a business owner on the business side, if you're approved to be, if you're licensed to have one of these businesses, will that affect your CPL?
Uh, I'm not aware of, uh at least from the city side of things, no. And, and just to make sure that I understood your question, because I broke up a little bit. You were saying that you, there was some concern that if you had a CPL that you could not own one of those businesses? That you would not receive a license? No, that's nothing that we're contemplating from the city side. So I'm not, um if that, that's a challenge from the state, but it's not, it's not a challenge from us from the city side at all. Nothing being contemplated like that.
Okay. So that's, that's awesome. Um especially for people who already have CPOs or trying to apply, really trying to diverse, diversify the amount of licenses they have. Um, we appreciate that. Uh another question that I saw was from someone who uses medically, wondering um, oh, it's the CPL and medical marijuana patient card. That's a, okay, that's a conflict. Thank you so much to the Black and Brown Cannabis Guild. We appreciate you for being here. Um, but another concern was for people who um may not necessarily want to hold a business license, so they don't want to be a dispensary. They don't necessarily want to have a microbusiness or grow, but will there be or are there any plans for perhaps workforce training? So people who would like to get uh into maybe buttending or being uh a cashier or retail person in these businesses?
Yeah, from the city side, we're not doing that yet. I mean, that will come as we, you know, this, this, this industry matures. First thing I tell you, this has been a heavy lift already just getting this here. You know, we've been threatened with lawsuits. So I mean, but the other thing I can say is that's the beautiful thing about this particular industry, that the opportunities for, you know, uh entrepreneurship are endless. So the city doesn't have to necessarily do that. There can be, you know, T, if you want to get into it, you can choose to provide that type of tutorial for folks.
Happening. Okay.
See what I mean? You know, so that's the kind of stuff that I'm saying, you know, let your mind wander at this moment, because the opportunity is there. The door is not, I mean, you, you of course are gonna have to have some upfront costs, no matter what you look to do. But that's the same with any business. But you just know that you don't need a license from us to do. You don't need a license to train buttenders, right? You don't need a license for that. Now, somebody may want to look at your credentials if they want to identify, they want to get some services from you, but
Right.
there's no license that that's necessary there. Let your mind wander and figure out how you can make that work for you as a business model.
So there are a lot of options for people to creatively support this industry aside from just holding a license.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I love that. So speaking of the licenses, I know there are about ten different types. Is there a limit on the number that people can have at a time? Like if I want to start a microbusiness, and for those who don't know, that's a seed to sell kind of operation. Or if I want to throw events or run a hold, uh open a dispensary, is there a limit to what I can do?
No, there's no limit. You can have as many li, now you're gonna have to pay for them, right? Of course, we go through the process. So it's not just because you have one license, it slides over to the other. No, that's a whole nother fee. But again, from the city standpoint, it's not too onerous. From the state, there's some challenges there for some people, because some of those licenses, depending on what you're trying to, to actually do, may go as high as twenty thousand dollars. So you really gotta know what you're trying to get into um before you, 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 you know, you gotta look before you leap, so to speak. Um, because you can really, really lose money, time, effort, your play line, if you're not doing things um proper and prim, if you will. But I will say this, definitely, and I'll tell everyone, one, know the law, know the ordinance, learn the game. Do not just talk to somebody and they tell you, okay, all you gotta do is this, I, mm-mm. That's not how this works. This, again, I mean, we're talking about an industry that's technically not recognized by the federal government. So we may be moving in a direction, but we're not there yet. So there's a lot of different uh like acrobatics that you have to do. You got, but you gotta make sure still that your tax records are, are right. Because if you mess up on those tax records, the federal government will be coming after you. And that's not just in this industry, it's in others, but certainly understand that's, those are the stakes that we're playing at, right? That's how high the stakes are in this game. You possibly might end up in a situation with the federal government um like anything else, your paperwork properly. So the other thing I try to tell folks is while uh many of us want to do everything on our own, you definitely gotta learn the rules, learn the laws, go to state website. Uh and that's M R A, I'm sorry, it is Michigan dot gov, Michigan dot gov backslash M R A, Marijuana Regulatory Agency. That's Michigan dot gov backslash M R A. And they'll give you all of the information that you need from the state standpoint. Um, but you also want to go to Detroit means business dot org backslash homegrown. I'm like a car salesman, I keep saying it, but you want to be, you want to go to that website as well to learn the city's ordinance and know the language, so you feel comfortable. You want to learn this information and have it. Okay, so now that you got that information, what do you do with it? Well, there may be a point where you hit a wall and you don't know where to go from that standpoint. There's nothing wrong with hiring someone who can actually help and assist you, whether it be a consultant or an attorney. Now, I know that's a cost upfront, but this is a real business and it may cause you to actually do those things that is necessary for you to actually not make those uh, not fall into those pitfalls. It's, I've seen so many fall into. So first, the, the thing I can say, learn, learn, learn as much as you can about the law, the ordinances that are in place, but then also network. Um, and then make sure you find out if the person that you're talking to, make sure they know what they're talking about. Check their credentials, check folks who they know. Because there was a guy who, and I, I've mentioned this in the past, there was a guy who was arguing with me and saying, you know what? I don't want a state license, uh council, I want a Detroit license. And I told him, I said, no, well, you gotta go through both processes simultaneously. So it's not a Detroit license or a state license. You've got to get licensed by both to open up in the city of Detroit. This guy argued me down. I'm like, I'm the one who wrote the ordinance. So I'm not, I'm not trying to steer you wrong. I'm trying to give you information. All I'm saying is make sure that whoever you're getting information from, vet that information. Vet that information, vet those people. And once you get the information, share with other people, because that's how we grow as a community. That's how we
Exactly. Exactly. So we got a question. It says, if you live out of state, but your partner is a current resident, does the resident's name have to be on the license alone, or can all partners?
So not only do they have, can they be, they have to be. Every individual who's a partner in the, in, in the entity have to be listed. They're, all of their information, name, uh personal information, because they gotta do background checks to make sure that you're not some crime boss who's trying to take over the market, the market in the city of Detroit, right? So we gotta do all that information. They do that for everybody. But the other thing is, if you are, and we've seen this too, and this is again, part of the benefit of kind of holding back and not jumping out first. We've been able to look at what other cities have, have, have done. We've seen how the market works there. So there are some cities that have some similar uh 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 language within their ordinances that we have. For instance, there may be a situation where um you can partner with, we call them legacy Detroiters, they call them something else, somewhere else. But if you partner with a legacy Detroiter, then you can kind of push them aside. You give them a couple hundred dollars, couple thousand dollars. Be quiet, legacy Detroit, let us run the business. That doesn't work that way here. If you are designated a legacy Detroit business, that business has to be at least, the ownership has to be at least fifty-one percent owned and operated. That's the big piece. Owned and operated by that Detroiter. And so there is no, now that can be a mixture, a combination, right? So let's say you have um a, a group of individuals who are, are together, right? So you have twenty percent. Uh yeah, three or four of them are legacy Detroiters. You got a group of ten that may not qualify because they're not fifty-one percent of those Detroiters. But if you start adding more legacy Detroiters and it's a group of you, now you reach that fifty-one percent threshold. So I, again, because of how cost intensive this is, um because of the knowledge that we all should be sharing, I, I do not frown upon people getting together and uh working a situation with the license collectively, but also understand again who your partners are, because again, you're owned and operated. So with the success, you get those, you reap the benefits. But if things go south, as owner and operator, you also have to shoulder those, those, those losses as well. So again, legitimate business, you gotta know the ins and outs.
Okay, question for you. You mentioned that um these marijuana is still not federally recognized or federally approved. With that being said, I know that that brings some challenges as far as getting funded. So we're talking about being able to get business loans from banks. Um, are there any resources available to legacy Detroiters? I mean, aside from the very generous discounts on property and application fees, but maybe are there lists or, or something about resources that people may apply to to help with funding?
Yeah, so I did get a uh a preview of our website. Unfortunately, I was in a meeting and didn't get a chance to see it actually go live. So I don't want to say it's on there, but that was something that has been contemplated to actually be placed online. There's some banks or some credit unions that are, are a little bit more, that are more willing to work with uh cannabis entrepreneurs. You're not gonna find every bank is willing to work with you. Um from, from the city standpoint, um we are absolutely trying to identify funds to assist legacy Detroiters to get into the industry. But it, you know, again, in, in the age of COVID, where, you know, you have businesses that are already open and they are struggling right now. We're trying to make sure that they stay open. And the funders that we typically would go to uh for this type of endeavor to help fund a legacy Detroit program, they're already assisting us with, you know, mom and pop shops on, you know, Main Street, you know, uh uh in, in our neighborhood. So it's all, it's, it's a challenge. We haven't been able to identify those dollars just yet, but let me know, I, I'm gonna let you know that we are for sure working on it. Uh we're getting closer, but we're, we, we haven't secured that transparently. We haven't secured those dollars yet. But it is uh certainly the goal that we will have at least a portion of those funds secured in advance of that April first um application um uh opening.
Awesome. Well, in the frame of supporting these legacy Detroiter um operators, uh Kitty or Kitty Keek asks, is it true that non-legacy Detroiter retail stores must buy fifty percent of legacy Detroiters' products?
Nope, it's not. You don't have to do it. That is definitely one of the benefits that we floated out there, uh or not a benefit, but a good neighbor uh opportunity. So again, if you are a uh non-legacy retail store and you're looking to get a retail license and you provide us with this type of incentives, you put that in your good neighbor plan, that looks pretty good. That helps. But then, you know, let's say someone comes or, or, you know, all things are equal and two applications come in and one has uh simply just, I'm gonna purchase fifty percent of my uh products from legacy Detroiters, and then another one comes in again with fifty percent hiring of returning citizens. Well, now that very nice looking proposal that came to force doesn't look as good as the one that's coming up after. So that's why we're, we're taking the time and not just doing a first come, first served. We're taking an opportunity to review all of the applications at once, so we can identify which ones are providing the best opportunity. But that definitely is a chance to uh to sweeten your, your, your uh, your application for those who are reviewing it.
If someone had an application in already prior to their knowledge of this program, would they still be able to apply for the program?
So they wouldn't be able to uh uh put an application in because they haven't gone live yet. So we're not issuing those applications until April first. So everything literally started today. So we started clean, like remember the Etch A Sketch? You shake it up, and you start all over again. We shake the Etch A Sketch, we shook it up, and we're starting all over right now on the, on January nineteenth.
Awesome. Um, let's take one more question, because I know you gotta run to another meeting. Uh oh, this one is interesting about, well, two more, because I have a question after this. But it says, could you get one of the discount properties? Um, and suppose your business failed, would you be able to turn that property into another type of business? Or would it solely have to remain some sort of cannabis based business?
So the goal is to make sure that business is um, that that, that facility is being utilized for a marijuana, uh cannabis related business? Because we do know that there is a, a challenge when it comes to the zone, trying to find properties that are zoned for cannabis. What I will say is right now, uh that will be something that uh will have to be determined between the uh property um owner, the individuals seeking to purchase the property and our planning and development department. Uh I have not talked to them about that, but I do know that the goal, I would be against it, quite honestly. I would want it to, to remain a cannabis related business. Um, but again, there are, you know, all these laws that I just became aware of, didn't know, certain things seem like it makes sense, but when you look at the law, they say, no, you can't do that. So there may be a prohibition against us um saying that you cannot uh transform that particular property into something else, maybe a bakery, you know, that doesn't do infused uh products. I don't know. But uh as of right now, that's not what's being contemplated. We do want that, for those facilities to stay uh in the hands of those individuals who are in the cannabis industry, especially if we're doing all the work to uh make sure that it's properly zoned for.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds like, that sounds reasonable to me. Um, but that was a really good question, considering how sometimes
Yeah, just think about it like this, right? There may be some folks who would just want to flip the property, get the property from us and then flip it.
That's true.
And, and because we, I mean, again, people are people and we see all types of things all across the board. So no, the, the goal is to make sure those property, that was an excellent question. I'm gonna go back and uh ask them to make sure that it's, it's very clear um before we start venturing into the actual purchasing, selling of property.
Okay. Um, so basically that means there's definitely more info to come um pre- Okay. Um, so basically that means there's definitely more info to come, um, pre-being able to submit. So pre-April first, um, oh, okay, there we go. Last question from me and then I will let you go. Thank you again so much for spending so much time with us. We really, really do appreciate it. But considering so many, there's so many benefits to not only the ordinance itself, but this particular part, this social equity program, this Detroit legacy program, which part is most important to you?
Um, the most important part to me is, you know, all of it is important, especially seeing that I had my eye on every page for two years. Um, but what I would say is if I were to project what I would want things to look like years, you know, a couple of years from now. I would, we would definitely have at least, uh, we, but we're going to mandate to have at least fifty percent of the businesses, uh, owned by legacy Detroit. But we'll actually have, um, you know, if we're talking about forty, seventy-five licenses that are available for, um, a legacy, I'm sorry, for record, for retail, adult use retails, al, also known as dispensaries. I want at least half of those to be legacy Detroiters. And I know there is a hurdle there. There's a huge hurdle when we start talking about financial, you know, challenges. When we start talking about, for some folks, even the, uh, the, the, the wherewithal to, the, the knowledge base of the industry itself. We know that there's some challenges. So I know that we're not going to reach that, that, uh, that point right out the gate. But we're going to move towards it. So I want a healthy industry where Detroiters really feel like they are, um, able to, uh, I don't own an industry within our own community. Eh, there's nothing wrong with saying that. I mean, I've always got to tap dance around the words because I got lawyers watching, everything is safe. They say, on this day, he said this, your honor, he didn't care about, right? But I'm being completely honest. My goal is to see Detroiters really run this industry. That's not to take anything away from anybody else. I don't want to see any harm done to any outsiders, so to speak, if you want to call them that. Um, what I do want to see is Detroiters be able to be proud about an industry that's located in their city where they're actually participating. And it grows in the direction that, um, is arcing towards Detroiters.
Yeah. I mean, especially when you're considering the, the growth of the economy triples down to everyone. And if it starts in the city, it can stay in the city and we can continue to see the, the city grow in a way that we would love for, for it to be. Um, thank you so, 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 so much. I am so appreciative. This was awesome. I cannot wait to post this so that everyone who may not have been able to tap in. I have all of your contact information, the office number, three, one, three, two, two, four, one, zero, two, seven, as well as your email address. Councilmember Tate at Detroit M I dot gov. And all of the links and all of the info will be in the description as well as on YouTube. Again, thank you so much. If people have any other questions, they can definitely refer to the website, which is currently pinned, but Detroitmeansbusiness.org backslash homegrown. Um, enjoy your next meeting. I'm sure it'll be great. And, um, everybody continue to stay glued on this. Um, there's gonna be plenty of updates between now and April. So just keep your eyeballs on it. Um, and we will bother the councilmen again later. Thank you so much.
Anytime. You let me know when. Again, I, I thank you because I don't do these very often either. This is something brand new. Aisha, blame it on Aisha. She did it. Uh, but I'm glad she did because this is, this is rewarding. Because we get an opportunity to talk to the community in a different way, right? Many times, you know, we're dressing a suit and they just see politician, blah, 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 blah. Now getting an opportunity to be on your feed, we know we're talking about a real community here. So I thank you for that, being able to get outreach, uh, in a different way. So I appreciate you.
Yes. Well, thank you so much. I'll probably end up playing some of this back over the weekend on my shows, of course, Saturday, two to six, Sundays, four to seven. So this information will be everywhere.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too. Have a good evening. You take care now. Bye-bye.
That was wonderful. I know there were a lot of questions that didn't quite get answered, but listen, don't worry. There, there are going to be plenty of resources. I was actually in touch with some people today who are doing a lot of work, um, in this industry. There's so many different entry points, right? There's so much happening. There's so many questions. There's so many issues. So a lot of people, um, a lot of people are interested. A lot of people are, are questioning. I know some people, this new plan still doesn't reach low level people because we don't keep fifteen years of record. So that may be the case now, right? But when you think about having this information available to you, you may be able to transition that into something, um, into something that you can do in the future. So don't think that just because if you don't hit this April first, April thirtieth application window, that you'll be closed off for forever. Now, do I have any specifics? Don't wait it to open again, child, please. But that might be some information that will be available to you at the links and the resources. Bye. Like I said, I did get some information today about people who may be able to assist you with filling out your applications. If you're interested, reach out to me about that. Um, but that's what we got right now. And considering where we started on the cannabis conversation in Detroit. Um, I think we've come a long way. We still got a long way to go. Again, it's not a federal thing. It's not a nationwide thing. So states are, are, are plugging and chugging away at it as they can. I don't know much about it. Again, I'm a complete newbie, but I am immersing myself in, in trying to find out as much as I can. So as I learn, I will share. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and log off of this before Instagram kicks me off because I would like to keep my dignity. I don't like getting kicked out during it. But, um, I will post this as soon as I can, both here and, um, on YouTube. So if you have any questions, again, you can reach the councilman's office directly. I will put that info. Otherwise, I'm gonna head it out because I don't know no more stuff. So I do not have any more things to say. Make sure you tune into my show this Saturday, two to six, um, I'll have one oh seven five. And of course, Sunday, four to seven. I love you so much. I love you so much. See you later. Bye.